Welcome back to iGen Politics. This is a podcast that makes politics engaging and relevant for all generations. This is Victor Sheehan, currently a sophomore at UCLA, was elected as the youngest delegate for Joe Biden, and also co-hosts this podcast.
And I'm Jill Wine-Banks, the author of The Watergate Girl, based on my experience as one of the Assistant Watergate Special Prosecutors. I've also had a number of other really wonderful positions, including as Head of Career and Technical Education for the Chicago Public Schools. And today's guest makes a schoolhouse pin. Those of you who follow me on Twitter know that I have hashtag Jill's pins. And so today's pin is a schoolhouse, as we welcome Randy Weingarten.
I was in high school when the pandemic shut down schools and know how difficult it was for my generation. We were suddenly thrust out of the classroom and into our homes and remote learning. As a result, students across the country had their education disrupted significantly. Now, the question is how to ensure that students and teachers can safely return in-person learning and bridge the divide that the pandemic revealed. Beyond the pandemic, we have many questions about education in America and are grateful to have the perfect guest with us today to talk about all of that and more.
Randy Weingarten is our guest. She is the President of the American Federation of Teachers, which is part of the AFLCIO, with 1.7 million members, one of the biggest unions in the country. And she has also been a teacher. They represent teachers, paraprofessionals, school-related personnel, higher education faculty and staff, nurses, and other healthcare professionals, and many others, both at the local and state and federal government level. They represent employees and early childhood educators. Prior to her election as the AFT president in 2008, Randy served as the President of the United Federation of Teachers for 11 years. It was Local Two, which represented approximately 200,000 educators in New York City public schools, as well as home childcare providers and other workers in healthcare and education. Ms. Weingarten, who we're going to call Randy today because we've gotten to know her and we love her. Randy holds degrees from Cornell University's School of Industrial and Labor Relations and the Cardoza School of Law. Thank you for joining us, Randy.
It's my honor to be with you, Jill, and my honor to be with you, Victor.
Thank you so much for coming on. I said this previously in the introduction, but I was a senior in high school when the pandemic began, and I remember both the emotional toll it took on me because I couldn't see my friends and teachers, as well as the academic effect it had on me, as learning through Zoom just wasn't the same as learning in the classroom. At the same time, though, I was fortunate enough to have a computer internet service and a public school that had the infrastructure to support remote learning. And I'm just wondering, at the beginning of the pandemic, how many schools couldn't support remote learning and how many can now?
So that's a, you know, that's like a four-part question. So number one, in terms of every school tried to figure out how to support remote learning at the beginning of the pandemic, regardless of whether kids had computers or not, or hotspots or not. There are many places, many stories of kids in rural areas where their parents or they would drive up to, you know, a school and just use the Wi-Fi from outside, or McDonald's and use the Wi-Fi from inside or outside, or, you know, they would put Wi-Fi on buses and have buses drive around. The creativity and the, just the imagination and the resiliency of kids and teachers were a really big part of the beginning of the COVID period of time. But, you know, we had millions, I would say that if you really look at the numbers, at least a third of the kids who should have had Wi-Fi didn't have Wi-Fi. Thank God, in the build, the new Biden infrastructure plan, there is a push to build broadband because you have huge swaths of America that don't have broadband. And so that is an infrastructure issue. But you also have huge swaths of America that have broadband, but their parents can't afford to have the internet service. So one of the things we kept on fighting for at the very beginning of this pandemic, that's why I put the number at at least a third, because it's not just whether or not you have the, you know, the broadband, but can you actually get internet to your home? And can you get it high speed enough so that you can use it? And do you have devices like we're on right now, as opposed to a device like, you know, this is a nice little iPhone, sorry, with all my credit cards in there, but it's, you know, but, but can, are you doing your work on a phone like that, or something that's even more rudimentary? Or are you doing your work on a computer or an iPad that has a keyboard so that you can do that? So that's why I say it's kind of four-part, because it's the broadband, it's the Wi-Fi, it's, you know, the platforms, and it's the devices, all of which we still haven't really fixed. Some yes, some no. It shows the inequities in America.
So to what extent do you think the COVID pandemic affected the educational trajectory of a student? For example, how many fourth graders now only have the education of perhaps a second or early third grader?
So I would say that there's, I'm going to be careful in terms of how I answer the question, because the answer is, you don't really know right now. There's a bunch of studies that are out there, which you can read in any which way. So there's a new study by Emily Oster and others, which I really think is quite damaging because they take the test scores from this past year, they compared it to test scores from three years ago, and they say, look at that, there's a drop. Well, we would have expected a drop, but I'm not sure that we should have had tests this past year, since none of them are relevant and most kids didn't take them. So the question really becomes, over the course of this year, how are we going to academically make sure kids are where they're supposed to be? You're not going to ever, and it's great that you're at UCLA, you know, we just settled the lecturer's contract there, and that was really, really cool. And I was out there the day we were supposed to be on strike, but it was a great settlement and celebration, so glad to see you there, or glad to see that you're at UCLA now. But think about it, you're not going to make up the fact that, you know, you may not have had a prom, or your senior year, or your friends in your senior year. Kids who are in kindergarten or pre-K, they're not going to make up the kind of emotional and social experiences they had, or they would have had if they were in school. So we've had two years of disruption. Those two years of disruption really matter, and kids are not getting their mojo back as fast as we would like. So I see this year, last summer, this year, and next summer, as years of both recovery and acceleration. We have to recover, but we also have to accelerate. And then we're going to know, you know, where kids and young adults are really at. And most kids are pretty resilient, which is pretty amazing and remarkable. But we have to be mindful that there's still a lot of anxiety about the loss of these two years, the disruptive effects of these two years. You know, and that goes, frankly, if you've had a family member who's died of COVID, who's very, very sick of COVID, from COVID, you have one set of pain. If you have a family member, or father or mom, or, you know, who lost a job, you have another set of pain. If all of a sudden, as I've heard from my, a lot from parents, your kids are not, you know, wanting to be out and about with kids as much as they used to be, that's a third set of pain. So we really have to be attentive to the social, emotional, and academic issues now, and try to meet kids where they are, and try to lift them to a place where they get their mojo back, and that we have academic acceleration, that by the end of this year, by the beginning of the next school year, we'll be able to weigh that. In addition to that, we got to do a bunch of tutoring, we got to lower class size, we got to wrap services around schools, we got to do the kinds of things that not just, not just pull our hair out, but that's attentive to this. And the last thing I'll say is this, the polarization doesn't help. The polar, there's a lack of cohesiveness in the country that, you know, I was in New York, I was the President of the Teachers Union in New York during 9/11. And, you know, a lot of us didn't like Rudy Giuliani the day before 9/11, we pretty much didn't like him a few days after 9/11. But at the end, but that, those few weeks, people came together around the whole country. With the exception of, you know, the really terrible discrimination against people who were Muslim, and I was really pleased, think about this, I mean, Jill, you, you think about this even more than anybody else, could you imagine a Donald Trump stepping in the way in which George W., George Bush did? You know, with, there was, there was fear, there was issues, but you had a President of the United States step in and say, we're not going to tolerate that kind of discrimination. You had people come together like never before, like what you just saw in Waukesha this, this, you know, this last few days. You don't have that level of cohesion around COVID, and that has hurt the kind of recovery and the acceleration that we need to do for all our kids.
So let's pursue that more about COVID, because now that there is, almost everyone is back in school, and yet there is a Delta variant that is surging, what measures do you think schools should be taking to protect students and faculty now that people are back in-person learning?
Right. So that's, so, you know, I often tease, I am a lawyer and a schoolteacher, I don't even play a doctor or scientist on TV. I have to listen to the scientists, you know, as, and, 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 and look at it through the lens of common sense, but listen to the scientists. And so I'm a big believer in being in school. The AFT, for example, did our first study, our first report about how to get back into school in April 2020. And so a lot of this kind of attempt to undermine the unions and things like that is all part of, you know, trying to undermine teachers and trying to undermine safety and trying to, you know, find, you know, trying to displace the responsibility that Trump and DeVos and, and they should have taken. But at the end of the day, we knew that the way to be in school, which we knew was really important for kids, that remote was a poor substitute, we would have told you that pre-COVID, a poor substitute for teaching and learning. The way to be in school was through a safety protocol. Safety was the vehicle in. And so what we've learned over the course of these last two years is that layered mitigation works, and the vaccines work. And so when we look at layered mitigation, you know, they include ventilation, masks, washing your hands, physical distancing. That's what layered mitigation, it's, it's the mitigation to stop the transmission of the virus. But where the vaccines come in, are the vaccines have been real game changers, as I assume this new, you know, drug will be when people have COVID. The vaccines have been real game changers, not about the dissemination, but about making sure someone is not seriously ill or dies from COVID. And so the vaccines become, you know, the vaccines and ventilation, to me, are the most important things that we can do in terms of schooling. Why do I say those two the most important? Masks are important, but at one point or another, we have to have an off-ramp with masks. Masks, you know, you know, they're hard to speak through, they're hard to teach from, kids have a hard time keeping them on all day. I'm really kind of just so surprised and amazed at kids' resiliency, because all of last year, you know, kids rarely complained about masks. But I think figuring out ways now that we have, you know, vaccines for all kids five and up, that there's a way of creating some easing of mask requirements, you know, the more kids get vaccinated, or another way of doing it will, is really important. We need to send a signal to parents and to teachers and to kids that they're not going to wear masks forever. So right now, as Delta is spiking again, you know, we still have to wear our masks, or whatever, whichever variant is spiking right now, we still have to wear our masks inside in schools. But we really need a protocol or metrics about what to do in terms of masking. And we need as many kids as possible, just like we needed as many educators as possible to get vaccinated, we need to make sure that we have really good ventilation, particularly in the winter, and we need to keep on washing our hands, and if we're sick, not go to, not go to school. Last thing I'll say is on tests, I'm a big believer in these rapid tests, I'm a big believer in the PCR tests. I think that they show what is invisible, but the problem is unless they're readily accessible, it's hard to say to people that you should have a protocol of testing, but they're not readily accessible. So tests, masks, ventilation, good cleaning, you know, washing one's hands, and of course the vaccines, and some, some combination of all of them when things are, when COVID's really high, and some way of, except for vaccines and ventilation, of pulling them away when we start seeing COVID rates go down.
So let's talk more about vaccines, and has the union taken a position about mandatory vaccination for teachers and for students?
We have taken, we, yes, we have taken positions concerning mandatory, or concerning vaccinations. And this summer, so number one, we are pro, 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 pro vaccine. Vaccines have been part of, you know, of, of school life, I would say going back to the 1880s in Massachusetts. And, you know, for those of us who are not as young as Victor, you know, we remember our polio vaccine, we remember our, you know, we remember, vaccines have just been a way of life, and I think the misinformation has been very, very damaging, not only to the COVID vaccine, but to so many others. So we initially took the position, we need vaccines, we need everybody vaccinated. We said initially, volitionally, because it was a new vaccine, because it was emergency use authorization, and because of so much misinformation and so much hesitancy, we thought it was really important for people to actually take it at their own speed, figure out what they needed and what they wanted. We were very appreciative of the Biden administration for putting teachers with nurses. By the way, I represent about 250,000 nurses, we are the second largest nurse union and the second largest teacher union, and we're actually the largest higher ed union. So we're just, so we, you know, so, so we deal with a lot of the issues that COVID has obviously presented. But this summer, we changed our policy, and we said, we have to really work with, not oppose our employers on issues such as vaccine requirements, including vaccine mandates. And we shifted from volitional to, yes, we had to negotiate it, there has to be, you know, some kind of bargaining over the impact of it, you have to have time off to get it, if you get sick, you have to have that time, you know, there should be off-ramps for, you know, people who want to be on leave if they decide that they, you know, there should be medical exemptions, religious exemptions. So you have to, there are things and details you have to work out. But we felt, and, you know, I'll talk personally, that with the Delta variant increasing the way it was, with knowing that vaccines were the key way of people not getting sick or seriously ill, or, or dying, even though there were breakthrough infections, and with the fact that kids at that point still couldn't get vaccines, we really felt the responsibility of, if you wanted to reopen schools in person, as we have really wanted to do, that that was part of our responsibility.
So have you negotiated all of those issues now?
Yep. In so many places, they've been negotiated. And frankly, before the vaccine mandates, 90% of teachers were vaccinated, they understood it. And since the vaccine mandates in, in New York, in, uh, New York, St. Louis, Washington, DC, Chicago, LA, many places have either a vaccine or test, or an actual vaccine requirement. And, you know, I think that that was key to actually reopening schools. Now, there will be people, even people who hear this podcast, who will, you know, tell me to go die because, you know, they think it was that this is their freedom and, you know, their freedom to choose. And it is their freedom to choose whether or not they want to be vaccinated, but not when we work with children, not when we are in healthcare. And, and part of what I blame here is the huge misinformation and, and the fears that have been engendered for, by these right-wing websites, and maybe by, which Jill would know far better than I, you know, Russian, Chinese interests, all, all attempting to create chaos and confusion.
And we're going to talk a little later about some of the chaos, particularly at school boards, but for now, I want to stick with some, some other issues, one of which is, you've stressed how important it is for students to be in school, and Victor will attest to that as well, as many of my friends' children. But during this year of remote learning, was anything learned that could impact how teachers teach now? Did they learn something valuable?
Yes. Yes, of course. I mean, you know, I hesitate to say yes, of course, as quickly as I did, because I don't want to, you know, in-person learning is really the most important. When you see people, when you can be in community, that's the most important. But, you know, the value of teaching and learning was huge during this period of time. Teachers, and I hear this all the time from parents, and teachers, and I hear it from kids, teachers became kids' lifelines. You also, you know, the screen, as, as, as hard as this is, the screen became a lifeline. People, you, you could get context, you had to really work hard, but you could actually see through kids' eyes what they were thinking. When a kid turned off a camera, you knew something was wrong. How do you figure that out? How do you listen to other cues? How do you ensure, you know, what you learned is, it's not just the seat time in schools, it's not, it's, it's the other kinds of things that you can do, the resiliency that kids developed. We also learned how to use remote and the internet in different kinds of ways, how project-based instruction is so important, how kids working with each other is so important, how you do these kinds of things. How much time can you really use and look at a screen? Or how much time can you really actually engage in a debate over, you know, how much time can you do direct instruction? So there's lots of different things that were learned, but the two things overwhelmingly that were learned were the schools that had really good collaboration to start with, were the ones who figured out how to solve problems.
And when you say collaboration, what do you mean? Between who and who?
What I mean is when principals and teachers were really working together, when a teacher or when you had teams of teachers working together, so somebody could say, oh my God, that really bombed, what would you do instead? Or the platform completely collapsed, how do you help me? So that's number one. The second thing we learned is that the places that had already had a community school situation or infrastructure or wraparound services, those kind of places already had real networks with parents, and that really, really, really helped, and real networks with kids. So, you know, collaboration really mattered, community schools really mattered, and having established networks with parents. And the other, the other piece of pedagogy that really, really helped was project-based learning. When we, when we actually could assign and kids were involved either individually or together in groups, doing projects, capstone projects, debates, even science experiments on, you know, Zoom, those things tended to transcend better in a remote situation than, you know, 20 minutes of direct instruction and giving, and, and what you would think of as a traditional classroom 20 years ago, or frankly, you know, what people do when they're, you know, very focused on test scores. But the resiliency of kids and the kind of things that you could use remote for, and how you then intersperse it within school learning, for those who have really been able to grab hold of it, it has enhanced the in-school learning experience.
I mean, just speaking off of personal experience, it was so remarkable to see what teachers were able to do with remote learning. I remember, like, one of the projects that we had to do was kind of work in small groups and do like a research project, and it was just so much turning Zoom into something I never knew would be possible. But I guess let's, let's switch to something that became really apparent during the pandemic and continues to be an issue post-pandemic, and that is the disparity in the quality of education throughout the system. I mentioned this a little bit in the introduction, but, you know, my high school had teachers with great salaries and gave every student like an iPad, we had a 96% graduation rate. But just kind of a few miles down, Chicago public schools often have less than half of that rate. And I'm wondering, what gives rise to such disparities?
The economics, opportunity, property taxes as the basis for how you fund schools, housing discrimination that happened years ago. I mean, I, you know, what, what schooling, and I sigh like that, because schooling should be the great equalizer, you know, and, and for those who have the least, we really should be giving the most. This is what Johnson did with the War on Poverty. And we know that, you know, educational levels, we know that income levels, wealth levels correlate a lot to, you know, kids' ultimate education, or kids' education levels. But what we should be doing is disrupting that by making sure that kids who are poor, first, you know, have the kind of nutrition they need in schools, have the kind of internet other equipment, lower class sizes, the, the, the array of curricular activities that makes school fun and joyful. We need to stabilize neighborhood public schools, something that Chicago has done, New York has done, and we have pushed to get more and more, is to have community schools with wraparound services, making sure the school is a center of community. It, you know, I, I, I went to school in Clarkstown, New York, we did not want for anything. It was a suburb 20 minutes north of New York City. I had the AP course. of New York City. I had the AP courses, I had music, we had drama, we had all sorts of sports, you know, JV, varsity, anything that a kid would want from school, we had. This is even in the 70s. I taught in New York City in the 1990s. I had to scavenge for chalk. My textbooks, I was a social studies teacher, I still am, on a social studies teacher on leave from Blair Barton High School in Brooklyn, New York. My textbooks, when we had Clinton as president, said presidents 10 and 20 years earlier. Every day when I left to go to school, I would stop at the printing shop on my way to get my materials printed for my kids. I'd probably double park, it probably was completely illegal. I'd run into the printing shop, give them what I needed to get printed for my kids, run to the coffee shop right across the street, get a, you know, muffin and a cup of coffee, be, you know, be back when they had finished printing, and go into school. That kind of subsidy of our lessons, teachers do all the time. But that's what we, we need to disrupt, that level of inequity. And when we do that, we see our kids soaring. Frankly, our kids soar sometimes, or, you know, regardless. But wouldn't it be good for kids in Title I schools or kids in schools where there's a lot of poverty to have exactly the same thing as kids in a suburban Scarsdale or in Evanston or in a, you know, a suburb of Alhav?
So I'm glad you mentioned Evanston because our school system just shut down for about a week because of a lack of staffing. And I'm wondering whether there is a shortage of qualified teachers or whether this is a COVID-related issue, or, I mean, Evanston shutting down for a week is pretty serious.
We're starting to see, you know, there's, there's, Betsy DeVos would never collect this data. So there's a private sector entity called Burbeo that, you know, started collecting data. And this week, last week and this week, we're seeing, you know, essentially from August, September, October, 97, 98% of schools were open five days a week. In the last two weeks, we are seeing some shutdowns. Now, some of it is, you know, simply because of not having enough staff. You know, all of a sudden you have, people are getting sick, you've got lots of substitutes, you don't have enough substitutes, you don't have enough bus drivers, you don't have enough paraprofessionals. So some of this is COVID-related and some of this is the disrespect of the profession. It's been a really hard start of this school year. We, we normally have a shortage anyway for two reasons. One, the disrespect of the profession. Two, the, you know, the salaries are not commensurate with similarly, you know, with, with, with salaries of people who have the same skills and knowledge in different professions. It's about a $20,000 gap between what you could make in teaching and what you can make with the same skills and knowledge somewhere else. And we've all heard the, you know, what the job market is called right now, the great resignation. Teachers call it the great frustration. And, and frankly, this year, teachers and paraprofessionals have talked about October being like June because it's been a very, very hard year. So there's a lot of stress all over. There's a lot of strain all over. People are getting sick. And so what you're seeing in terms of the closures right now are either a combination of mental health days because there's been violence and a lot of tension and kind of like wanting a timeout. That's what, for example, a couple of districts are doing, like, like Denver or, I think Detroit. But their shortage that you're seeing in Evanston is probably a combination of COVID rates going up and a shortage right now of not having enough substitutes.
Okay. So, and you also mentioned the issue at UCLA, Victor's school, with a strike recently that you successfully resolved. What was the issue there?
Well, there's, there's, you know, one of the things that you have seen, though, I hope, is that we have, in the K-12 space, we have wanted schools to reopen so badly and get as back to normal as possible so badly, that even with terrible conditions in lots of places, including in Chicago, there's only been one K-12 strike in the entire country this fall. And that was in Scranton. And a lot of that is a testament to teachers' understanding that regardless of the circumstances, we really have to do everything in our power to be in school this year and, and create as normal a situation as possible for our kids. That's on the K-12 level. On every other level, you're seeing the huge frustration that has seeped out by workers not being treated fairly. And whether it was Kaiser, there was, there's a week in December that my union, we have 3,500 locals, but, you know, we, we've gone years without a strike. My union has had three locals that were either on strike or settled, like UCLA, hours before the strike deadline. Kaiser Permanente settled two days before the strike deadline. And Scranton, which has now settled, was on strike for about 12 days because of receivership situation and five years without a contract and with looking and, and, and with a healthcare plan that was about to be imposed that was completely substandard. So you, so, so in one week, in November, just like the deer workers, just like the Kellogg workers, you know, the wire cutters in the New York Times, the reason you're seeing this kind, this, this number of strikes is that people are really, really frustrated with the inequities and with the disrespect they feel. In UCLA, the number one issue was not just salary, but for the lecturers, that basically you never know from semester to semester whether you're going to have a job. And so this is people who are not on tenure track. They teach about 30% of the courses in the university, the entire UC system. And you, and they would not know whether there was job security or not. And when, when you look at lecturers, the precarity of that job, of an adjunct, of a lecturer, trying to cobble together a few jobs, trying to make sure that they can, you know, make a living for their families. If you don't know what's going to happen semester to semester, that creates a lot of anxiety and a lot of stress. And this was not budgetary. This could be any reason or no reason at all. So the number one issue was how to create a situation that if you are doing a good job, there's a presumption that you will continue that job from semester to semester or year to year. And that was the most important issue. And that was the issue that we were able to win on.
I want to ask you also for maybe just a brief comment about the University of Florida and what happened there, where tenured faculty were barred from testifying. And this happened, two, two of them at least sued. They weren't allowed to testify about voting rights. Another, a doctor was not allowed to testify about COVID. And so did the union get involved at all in protecting faculty in those situations?
Those were, you know, the, the great news about this, so University of Florida, those are our members as well. And the great news about those situations were that as we're getting involved, we always, look, we have our members back. You have to have your members back. This is what a union is about. You know, it's, it's not just about, you know, salaries and benefits. People have to be able to do their jobs. People have to be able to live. And part of having a union is to know that you got, that somebody has your back. And so we were getting involved in the case, the, you know, we were doing it through our local. And I was surprised that DeSantis backed down on this one. I was, you know, I'm never, I'm never surprised about the, you know, I, I assume that the reason was the hypocrisy of talking about freedom and the First Amendment in one breath and then not enabling or allowing professors of their university to testify in another breath, which pretty much runs right afoul of any number of clauses within the First Amendment. You know, normally, they don't, DeSantis doesn't care about the hypocrisy. But I was surprised how quickly he backed down in this instance. But, but it was, it was that the professors were really brave. And the, you know, and, and our union was going to be engaged in a part of the, the litigation. And equally important, in the fight that has to happen in communities to change narrative and, and change climate.
So I can tell you, I was in Gainesville at the time this was going on and staying with friends who, he's on the law faculty. And, and I would say that DeSantis backed down because it was quite a ruckus down there. And there was very severe backlash at the university and in the general community against what had happened. But I, when we talked just before we started recording, I learned for the first time that you had been a career and technical education teacher at one point, or taught in a career and technical education school. And you learned that I had been the chief officer for career and technical education for the Chicago Public Schools under Arne Duncan. And I, I, I don't know, I mean, we don't have a lot of time, but if, if I could just very briefly say, number one, that I think career and technical education does a great deal for educating our, our students and getting them into well-paying careers. But there's one specific school I want to ask you about, because it's one of my proudest accomplishments, was I created something called DeVry University Academy, which is an early college program. It is a four-year high school. It's actually only two years. You enter it as a junior, and you spend an additional summer in summer school. But at the end of four years of your normal high school, you graduate with a diploma and an associate degree. And the students there, almost 100% went on to get a four-year degree because these were students who come from families with no one previously going to college, but they go, oh, I just finished two years of college. I could actually do this. And it didn't cost very much more per student than an ordinary high school. And it actually saves money because the city, of course, pays for community colleges. And this wraps it all into one because you get the same associate degree as you would after graduating two years of community college. So I'm just wondering, how many of those are there? And why don't we have more? I could have created at least a half a dozen more and really think it would help our students and our society and make people pay taxes earlier because you get out of school earlier.
So, you know, I think the, with, with the Perkins money that actually is used, and one of the few places where the Trump administration actually agreed with Democrats was everybody wanted the Perkins grants to continue and the Perkins career tech ed allocation to happen, which is, I think these career pipelines are really important. And we need to have lots of different choices within the public space for kids. And career tech ed is a really important, a really important opportunity and needs to happen in big and in small districts. And I want to lift up what we've done in Peoria, for example, in terms of doing some of that. What you've just asked about, Jill, is the kind of for the early college model, which I also think is really important. And there are lots of different early college models. AP is part of an early cottage, college model, a PTEC program, which happens in a bunch of places that started with IBM as an early college model, where IBM then would interview every student that came out of a PTEC school and who would then get a six-year degree within four or five years. And IBM would interview, didn't, IBM didn't say that they would give a job, but they would interview. And several other tech companies did something like that as well. Bard High School had an early admissions schooling in New York like DeVry did with you in, in, in Illinois or in Chicago. These are all really good models. What we need to do, though, is we need to make sure that every public school is a place that parents want to send their kids, educators want to work, and kids really thrive. And so having a bunch of different kind of magnets or different kind of schools like that, plus having really strong community schools pre-K through high school, is what a big school district should be doing. And, and where you are very focused on how you turn around and help lift up the places that, you know, where, where kids are not achieving as well as we would like, and what do you need to put, the support you need to put there to do that. And then also, make sure that the places that are doing well, you don't rob them to give to others. You make sure that they can stay thriving. So, so it is, it's important to have those different kinds of choices for kids. And it's also important to have really strong neighborhood, sustainable community schools so that kids can walk to a school safely, where parents know that a school is close to them, you know, in a city or in a suburb, can get easy access, or in a rural area can get real access to a school.
So I definitely want to have you back to talk more about career and technical education because it was something I knew nothing about until I took this position and was so impressed with the results of it in terms of attendance, in terms of graduation rates, in terms of students understanding the relevance of geometry to their future lives. So let's, Victor has a few more questions before we wrap up.
Right.
And we'll come back for that.
It's just a way, if you can spark something in a child or a young adult, if a child or young adult wakes up in the morning and says, and look, I'm a high school social studies teacher, if a child wakes up in the morning and says, I want to go to school, you spark something, they want to be in school, that is half the battle. And then schools become places of treasure. They become places that people, that kids want to be. And we have then have to nurture, help them thrive, help them confront tough issues, things like that.
I mean, it's, it's the wonder of curiosity and being able to sustain that curiosity that makes schools so amazing. So the last topic we want to talk to you about is an issue that's a concern of both Jill and me. And that's the rise of violence and attacks at the school board level from parents over things like mask mandates. And I guess just broadly, what do you make of escalating tensions and even violence from parents at that school board level?
So I would say there's, there's two things here. Number one, violence is never good. And one, never, I don't, you know, we are, we are about making sure that our kids are safe and welcome, making sure that schools are safe and welcoming. Violence can never be condoned in any way, form, shape whatsoever, period. Having said that, I think it's been a mistake for people. And, and look, I, I love Terry McAuliffe. I, you know, I've known him for a long time. It's a very big mistake for him to have said in a debate that parents don't have a role in their kids' education. that parents don't have a role in their kids' education. I know what he meant. It was about book banning and things like that. But of course, parents have a role in their kids' education. Of course, parents have to have a say in their kids' education. And, and part of locally governed school boards, frankly, there's been a huge debate in, in Chicago about this, about whether you have Merrill Control or whether you have locally controlled school boards, is that there is an election of people in the community to have a local board which is connected to people in the community. That is part of what people need in terms of a say on a weekly, monthly basis, whenever the school board meets. But also that it's the people in a community that elect the governing board of schools. Parents have to have a say. It's like teachers have to have a say in terms of how they teach and what they teach and things like that. You have to have the, some authority, responsibility and agency. That goes double for parents. So the question really becomes, what's really going on? And I think there's two things that are going on. One, which is about disinformation and about, as Christopher Rufo and Bannon and others said, they saw what happened with the moms in the aftermath of the school shootings. They didn't like it. And they have tried to create a bunch of grass tops groups to vie for, you know, the suburban women's vote. And they were very upfront about what they were doing. And part of this is creating the chaos, creating a sense of, of a problem, like you take CRT. I'm a lawyer. I learned about, you know, critical race theory in law school. I never taught it as a social studies teacher and never, I mean, we didn't even think about it. We didn't think about this, teach it. The, the real issues become, you have to teach honest history. And, and, you know, sometimes it's really uncomfortable. It's, it's uncomfortable to think about our country as enslaving Black people. It's uncomfortable thinking about what our country did to people of Japanese descent in the, in, in World War II. These things are uncomfortable. But just like we teach the good, we have to teach the bad. And, and we have to get kids engaged in that and in, and understanding that. So, but, but it's uncomfortable. So what's happened on the second level, which is very, very, very disturbing, is that something that can be uncomfortable, something that actually, if we overcome to become a more perfect union, that that has now become a culture war. The same is true with kids who are trans. We have an obligation to help all kids. Yes, it's uncomfortable sometimes. But that is our obligation as educators. So am I concerned about this? Yes. Do I think that we spend more time focused on that as opposed to the thousands of places? Like, like in, in school board after school board, where parents actually got together and, and, and won these races? And, 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 and wouldn't let people who were demonizing others, you know, take hold of a situation? I think that basically what parents want is for our kids to do okay. And they want to be respected and they want to be heard. And they basically think what we did in terms of K-12 was the best we could do. But we want to make sure that things are better. And I would say that even in a very, very tough anxiety-laden period of time, what you see in most places in America when it comes to our schools is that parents want schools to be places that their kids can thrive, that their kids are welcome and safe and where they actually love and respect their teachers. And our job is to do everything in our power to make sure that our kids thrive.
I totally agree with that. And this is one question that I ask all of our guests at the end of the podcast. And, you know, having been a teacher, having led the union, I'm wondering if you have any advice for my generation during these coming months?
Don't give up. This is your world. You inherited a mess from us and I'm sorry about that. But we got a democracy to try and keep. We got a world to try, a climate to try to sustain. And your generation is creative and ingenious, with huge hearts and souls. And we got to create what DeTocfo said of our country so many, 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 many generations ago. It was a place of great, great diversity and a place that could have great community. You are a generation that can help do this. And don't give up on it. This is, the can be, one of the greatest places on earth. We need you to fulfill that love and that inspiration and aspiration.
Thank you so much, Randy Weingarten. That was a beautiful answer and a terrific interview. We appreciate your being with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We hope you enjoy this episode of iGen Politics as much as we did. We hope that you'll join us next week for another episode and follow us wherever you get your podcasts or follow us on YouTube.